Good evening and welcome to tonight's city, Yukon City Council Municipal Authority. It's May 2nd, 2023, 7:00 PM. We're here in the council chambers in the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street in the great city of Yukon, Oklahoma. If you please stand with me for the invocation, Tom Arnold from Good News Church, followed by the flag salute.
To Heavenly Father, we come to you now in the name of Jesus, and we just thank you, Father, for blessing our city, Lord, blessing our leaders, blessing our educators, all those that serve our city, Lord. We just thank you for this great state of Oklahoma, and thank you, Father, for all the people that work so diligently to make it a successful administration and government. And, Father, we just ask tonight that your wisdom and understanding will be poured out upon us as we look to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Selby?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Yonda?
Here.
Gillen? Gillen?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Here.
Okay, at this time, we're going to have our newly re-elected Jeff Wooten, he's going to be sworn in by Judge Jennifer King. Are y'all gonna do it up front?
This is your oath of office. I, Jeffrey Wooten-
I, Jeffrey Wooten-
solemnly swear-
solemnly swear-
that I will support, obey-
that I will support, obey-
and defend the Constitution of the United States-
and defend the Constitution of the United States-
and the Constitution of the state of Oklahoma-
and the Constitution of the state of Oklahoma.
I will discharge the duties-
I will discharge the duties-
of my office-
of my office-
with fidelity-
with fidelity-
that I have not paid-
that I have not paid-
or contributed-
or contributed-
either directly or indirectly-
either directly or indirectly-
any money-
any money-
or other valuable thing-
or other valuable thing-
to procure my nomination-
to procure my nomination-
or election-
or election-
except for necessary and proper expenses-
except for necessary and proper expenses-
expressly authorized by law-
expressly authorized by law.
that I have not-
that I have not-
knowingly violated-
knowingly violated-
any election law-
any election law-
of the state of Oklahoma-
of the state of Oklahoma-
or procured it-
or procured it-
to be done by others-
or be done by others-
in my behalf-
in my behalf.
that I will not knowingly receive-
that I will not knowingly receive-
directly or indirectly-
directly or indirectly-
any money-
any money-
or valuable thing-
or other valuable thing-
for the performance or non-performance-
for the performance or non-performance-
of any act or duty-
of any act or duty-
pertaining to my office-
pertaining to my office-
other than the compensation allowed by law.
other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear-
I further swear-
that I will faithfully discharge-
that I will faithfully discharge-
my duties-
my duties-
as council member-
as council member-
of the city of Yukon-
of the city of Yukon-
state of Oklahoma-
state of Oklahoma-
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my abilities.
And now we will do your loyalty oath.
Okay.
Continue. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
that I will support-
that I will support-
the Constitution-
the Constitution-
and laws of the United States of America-
and the laws of the United States of America-
and the laws of the state of Oklahoma-
and the laws of the state of Oklahoma-
and that I will faithfully discharge-
and that I will faithfully discharge-
according to the best of my ability-
according to the best of my ability-
the duties of my office-
the duties of my office-
or employment-
or employment-
during such time-
during such time-
that I am a council member-
as I am a council member-
for the city of Yukon, Oklahoma.
for the city of Yukon, Oklahoma.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Conrad, Conrad, could you get a picture of them with the seal behind it? Sorry, I'm orchestrating a little. I just think that your wife would appreciate that. So we don't make you do it with blood. Welcome back, Vice Mayor. All right. There you go. All right. At this time, we will consider a motion to accept nominations for the position of mayor for a one-year term in electing the position of mayor. Do I have a motion?
I would like to nominate Shelley Selby for mayor of Yukon.
Do we have any others?
Just a second.
Oh, somebody wanted? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Gillen?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
No.
Consider a motion to accept the nomination for a position of Vice Mayor for a one-year term in electing the position of Vice Mayor. I make a motion to nominate Donna Yonda for Vice Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any other nominations?
I'll nominate Jeff Wooten for Vice Mayor.
Need a second?
Second?
Okay. And let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Okay, we need to-
This is, this is the motion for Donna Yonda as Vice Mayor. Zimmerman?
No.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gillen?
No.
Wooten?
No.
Okay, that motion fails. The next motion is for Jeff Wooten as Vice Mayor. Wooten?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Yonda?
No.
Selby?
No.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
That motion passes three to two.
Okay. At this time, I very seldom meet and miss, but I am up for Public Official of the Year for the state of Oklahoma, Main Street. And so I am going to step away and let my Vice Mayor fill in the rest of the council, and I will be back next time. So I appreciate you allowing me to go to this meeting.
No, I can do it from here. That's all right with Doug.
Fine with me.
All right. Presentation and proclamations? Got anything?
We have none tonight, Mr. Vice Mayor.
All right. Visitors?
I have no requests.
For recesses, as Yukon City Council, we reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. One A, YMA Consent Docket. The item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If the item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, it will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve, A, the minutes of a regular meeting of April 18, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes. All right, we'll adjourn as YMA and reconvene as Yukon City Council Consent Docket. Item is placed on this agenda so the Yukon City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If the item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve, A, the minutes of regular meeting of April 18, 2023; B, payment material claims in the amount of $915,890.35; appointment of Jane Mitchell to the Library Board as recommended by the Library Board Nominating Committee; D, denial of claim number 212769-1 from Carolyn Greenwood, 110 Trenton Terrace, Yukon, Oklahoma, for a broken sewer line, as recommended by the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group; and E, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal. Do I have a motion?
Some moves.
Second.
Any discussion?
We'll just be curious if there was anybody here representing 110 Trenton Terrace.
All right, see nobody? Let's vote.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes. All right. Reports of boards, commissions, and other city officials.
Nothing tonight, Vice Mayor.
Very good. All right, number three, consider a motion to approve the amended commercial PUD for Ground Control Trampoline Park at 1700 Health Center Parkway, as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Anybody, any discussion on this?
I, I have a question on this. I see the renderings, and I completely get why they're asking to be able to use less brick and things like that. My question's going to be, um, do, do you, does the city feel that this is going to cause more people to come searching for this? And should, should we just change this whole requirement if we're gonna do that?
Well, we believe that the PUD is probably the best tool to do that, because we could work out what we feel is appropriate for appearance and where it fits in. The whole idea of the requirement was not to have basically an agricultural building in a commercial zone.
Right.
So we feel like it is an appropriate tool. We can work out what we think is a compromise and come up with something that looks real good.
Yeah, like I said, architecturally, I, I see it, and I think it's going to look fine. I just, I'm just curious, because, I mean, we're, we're changing a lot of what our requirements, 75% brick-
On all four sides.
On all four sides.
Yes.
And we're going, what, 30, 60?
Yeah.
With 10 on columns?
Yeah, and it's a mixture of, uh, it's a mixture of materials, so we felt it was appropriate.
Sounds good.
All right. Okay, anybody else? All right, let's vote.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
All right, item number four. Consider a motion to approve a conditional use permit for a mixed-use automotive-themed business at 517 and 519 West Main Street, as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Oh, come on, let's have a little discussion on this one. Come on. Mitch?
Stand here. I've never been to one of these deals in here 25 years downtown. So, I'm Butch Hensley at 505 West Main, right next door to where we're gonna put whatever the, whatever this is gonna be. I just got notice of this about three weeks ago, and I'm concerned, being a neighbor to this thing, that we're gonna put in cars that are, they're gonna be running loud, exhaust fumes, we're gonna have traffic issues, parking, which we already have, even though I've got mine in the back. And I, I, I don't know exactly what we're getting, because I've heard from a new Bronco dealership to a, to a antique car dealership. So I don't know what it is. If it's an antique car dealership, I work on cars, and those things are loud. And, you know, I conduct a business right next door. And we managed to work it out when CrossFit was there, Goodwill was there, you know, and there was no problems. I'm concerned about that. Everything else they're doing, I think it'd be great for downtown. I'm just a little nervous about what kind of car dealership we're gonna have and what kind of requirements we're gonna have on them to avoid things like noise and smells and just traffic and those kind of things.
Anybody want? Do you have anybody that wants?
Mitchell.
Mitch, you want to talk on that?
I'll jump in.
Okay.
Charles Potiker, I'm architect on the project. I think, I think they're valid concerns. Parking is something we talked about with the Planning Commission. I think there's at least discussion going on to address the parking issues that we have. As far as the noise goes, I also think that's a valid concern. I'm a car guy, I drive a Challenger, it's a loud car, and so I understand. We are putting in, as required by Yukon, sound isolating measures and also some landscaping to help separate some of those items. Other than that, there is, the initial stage for 517 is to put in a dealership, and we're planning on selling what we call a Defender. It's made by the United Kingdom. So that goes in 517. The, the way that that, that lot evolves is into a, basically a repair shop for antique cars. So be basically doing both things. 519, which is the building immediately to the west, we're looking at dividing that into multiple small retail spaces. So it could be a restaurant, it could be a park store, not necessarily geared towards cars, even though I like to use that word a lot, but really geared towards vehicles. It could be boats, cars, motorcycles, different things. And the lot to the west of that is really kind of for Yukon, in a way. And it's, it's, it's designed to host a, a, a number of things, and, and I think you have a sheet that probably has six or seven bullet points on it of just some ideas that we ran across that we really liked. One of those being a vehicle of the week. Somebody has a nice boat, somebody has a nice car or truck. We'd like to put it on display safely, so that, because that's, you know, if it was me, if it was my car, I'd wanna hide it for a week, or show it off for a week and make sure it was safe after that time. So there's a number of those things. We also want to bring kids into this. I do also think it's worth mentioning that some of the hours of operation are probably not 8:00 AM through 5:00 PM in terms of a large quantity of vehicles showing up. I think that's a fair statement. So we're probably on the off-hours, you know, Saturday, Sunday, those kind of things. Think POPS. POP 66 is a similar arrangement. And then at the end of the day, we also want to do something that is really kind of Route 66-based, in that we do some sort of iconic element statue, we can call it a statue, but just some kind of iconic element to bring to the table and really kind of set the tone, not only for today, but also for, I think, where Yukon might be tied up going tomorrow. This all kind of goes in place with setting to what we call, what I would call cruise point between Mr. John Nail's Retail Center and this area. So you have a cruise spot in between, in a way of sharing things. But, but really, all of this started when Justin asked me, he goes, you know, when you go to, when you go through a venue on Route 66, there's, you can either fill up your gas tank, or you can get some food, but you really don't have anything to do. And we're trying to fix that. We want to have something to do, not only for the adults that have the nice cars, but for the kids that are into those things. And, and one of my personal favorites is we are planning, and I think it's kind of an important part, planning on putting a couple of ping pong tables, actually near your side of the property. And we want kids to go there, we want them to play there, we want them to be involved. And I think, from my perspective, just being able to see the city of Yukon municipal buildings right across the street, I think that's kind of an important connection. So we want to add a flag, and we want to do kind of a clock tower, and there's some of those types of things that we want to really bring to the table. That's the plan, more or less.
You mentioned cruises?
Yes.
Where do you envision the cruise route? And what times do you envision that?
Um, have you ever gone on a car, car cruise? Do you have a-
No, I've, I've, I've seen what we call cruises over in the city that turn out to be a bunch of people with junky cars that want to show them off.
Right. Right. That does happen.
Yes.
So I'm really thinking more Saturday, Sunday crowd, people my age or in the range of my age, driving their cars around. Since we're trying to connect this to kids, including a range of YouTubers, so we're trying to hit a crowd, but, but I think the focus is really family-friendly. It's not a bar destination, even though we are looking at a restaurant that would serve alcohol, but the main attraction is a restaurant, not the alcohol. So I do think there's a concern there. I think that's true for any place that you go. And so I do think that being able to manage, Mr. Nail's Retail has, has a Cars and Coffee type event. I can't remember, I know they changed it, but it was Tuesday nights at one point, then Saturdays, and I think what that can do is help split the load with, with what we're trying to do. The other thing is Route 66 is an iconic attraction, and I really love the idea of, of not just having a stopping point for Route 66, just another stopping point, but the fact that, that so much more of this belongs to Yukon. And the things that we're trying to do to bring the community into that, I think is what, what could maybe make the difference.
And my, I just, my, the retail part sounds great. My, my concern's just, and I know you'll start cruises with the element you're wanting. My concern's the element that joins in, and if we get craziness out of that.
Well, yes, that's understood. I understand, I get that. There, there is some past attractions, let's just say POP 66, where the potential for things to get out of hand can exist. You know, at some level, I think the city manages that. At some level, we just try to control it. We want to be good stewards to the community in terms of how all of this kind of folds out. There's a little bit of nervousness, I think, you know, and when I think of nervousness, I think, boy, you do the grand opening, everybody finds out about it, and the first day, you've got 500 cars. Now, after that first day, I think things settle down, to, to a large extent. But our audience is Yukon, it is surrounding cities, it is also European, it's, it's out of country people that, that take Route 66 cruises. So it's, you know, from the small to the big.
Gotcha. Do you see this being like, years ago, you used to go to Moore and cruise in Moore, where they were just constant?
Yep, and so they did that, and then they closed that down for a while. Now it's back. It's just, I think, there's, there's probably more destination points, and I don't want to come across like some kind of an expert on this issue, but there are more destination points, there's identified restaurants, I think that that crowd goes to, this, this adds another node to that. So I, I think, you know, there's always potential for people to do bad things, no matter what you do.
Sure.
What we want to do is, is obviously keep an eye on that, do what we can through the measures that we have and the tools that we have to manage that, like fencing, some soundproofing, site proofing, those kinds of things. Yeah, understand.
This is going in between, this is like the parking lot there right off of Main, where there's like a, I'm guessing, like a lawnmower?
Sir, we need your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Patrick McClung, longtime business owner here in Yukon, former educator. This is next to the lawnmower and like, you know, power tool supply store? Is that what's right there on the one side?
Almost immediately that way.
Okay, so it's-
Just across the street.
Across the street, okay. Right next to the lawnmower store?
My office is on the other side.
Okay, I got you. Cool, thank you.
Anybody else with any discussion?
You know, we've always had the, the cruising for a cause, and there's never been a problem, so I don't, I wouldn't anticipate a problem.
No, and I want to make sure I did not imply that your group could potentially be a problem. That was not the implication, it was groups trying to join in.
Chief corner out here.
I think it's a good concern.
You're behind the pole. Do you see any issues in your area, in your world, that, that we couldn't handle or that could come up from something like this?
For the operation of the business, as he described it, no. I think for any type of a cruise activity or planned event, our special event planning and permitting would fall in place and would cover that. So we would have enough notification as to maybe the number of vehicles involved, how many officers that may take to handle an event, and what the hours and operation of that event would be, and that would have to go through the process that it does now with all the department heads.
Thanks. Okay, any other discussion?
Still have answers to my questions.
Justin Greenfield, I own the bill or co-own the building at 517 West Main. I'm happy to address the questions you have in order. So where do you want to start?
You want to stop noise, smells, and traffic?
Okay. It's Route 66. Route 66 is a worldwide icon. We're located on, we're located on Route 66, and so we want to work with the community as best we can to make everybody work together. This is a challenge. I want to meet you, go to coffee, and figure out how to work it out. The concept's still open, but we want to give something back to Yukon, and I love Route 66. Next?
You haven't answered one question yet.
I did. We're gonna meet for coffee and figure out a plan for the rest.
It needs to be discussed right here.
Well, we agreed that sounds and fumes are part of roads that pass slightly. Route 66, where we're located, is a highway.
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Because I run a business right next door and have people in, and I can't have cars and smells and all the parking things full from eight to two every day. I mean, I try to work around everybody, and I've been in Yukon for 25 years, I've maintained one of the oldest buildings in Yukon to standards, and now we're getting something that could damage my business, and that's gonna be expensive for somebody.
I hear you. And I understand there are concerns. That's why with Charles, that could make belief that we can make this work for everybody, and it's my goal to make it. We, you know, we can work together. I think it's gonna help Yukon to have this kind of attraction. It's going to bring a lot of traffic. I've had that building for lease for two and a half years. I've not had a single inquiry. It's sat empty. I've carried the note the entire time. Nobody wants it as it is. So we have to move it forward. We have to develop it. So then we have the question, okay? I got an inquiry if I could put $100,000 in TI for it to be a dentist's office or something. But the thing is, it's Route 66. It's downtown. We were lucky enough to find the half acre next to it, and I have two little kids, and there's really nowhere in Oklahoma that's a car-centric Route 66 spot, and I think that's a shame. And this part of Yukon is special. I love it. But it's getting forgotten about. Everything's moving to 40. All the traffic's moving to 40. Every, all the new developments over there. I think this is an opportunity to bring the heart of Yukon back to the City Hall, and also we have a lot of parking at City Hall that can be a revenue generator if they choose to be.
Again, I have no problem with what you're gonna do on the west side. It's the east side I'm concerned about.
Everything that we're proposing, there's no parking in that lot. So all the parking that we're talking about is already existing parking, whether it's out back here, or whether it's parking that's already, we're not adding to or taking away from that parking, and we're not gonna allow any parking on the lot based on the planning commission meeting that we had last time, we got approval for that. Other, other than that, you know, Yukon requires fencing, for example, site screening, requires fencing, for example, site screening, and, and some level of sound isolation. I mean, that's something that we can-
If you're not listening, I'm not on that side. I'm on the east side. We have a brick wall between us, and you still haven't discussed any part of what I've asked. I don't, I, I think it's great what you want to do on the west side. I have no problem with that. I'm sorry.
So your, your building is on the east side of-
It's where five oh five.
Of five seventeen.
Yes.
And so on five seventeen, we're talking about that being a dealership.
And a repair shop.
Yes. Yes. Well, now the repair shop doesn't have the vehicles being turned on inside the building. That's actually against the code. So we couldn't, we couldn't do that if we wanted to.
Then where are you going to put repair cars?
Where?
Yeah.
Inside the building.
Okay.
They get repaired inside the building, but they don't get turned on.
How do you get them on? How do you get them in?
Push them in, push them out, just like you do at a lot of colleges.
Okay, so if you're going to push them in and push them out, as long as they don't start in the building, I could go with that.
I, I-
But-
I'm in your camp, I'm in your camp as far as that goes. That's a serious issue, notwithstanding sound, the fumes are an issue, and, you know, requires makeup air and those sorts of things. But no, I'm an advocate of definitely not turning these cars on inside the building.
So you work on a car, you pull it outside, you push it outside to start it, realize you didn't do it, you're going to push it back in?
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, those are the rules.
Okay. I'm still opposed to it.
Fair enough.
Okay, any other discussion?
Mr. Horton, I correct and presume in the conditional use permits are reviewable every year?
That is correct. It is, it's reviewable each year.
Okay.
And you could put additional comments on to the conditional use permit too, if you want. Okay, if there's no further discussion, we will vote.
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Item number five.
Just for, for the record, does that include the conditions that were listed that were approved by the planning commission?
We, uh-
The item is as recommended by the planning commission.
Just wanted to make sure that was in the record.
Okay. Item number five, consider a motion to accept the fee in lieu of detention in the amount of five hundred for detention facilities for Sharon Fellowship Church, one one zero one South First Street, Yukon, Oklahoma, as recommended by the city engineer. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Gillen?
No.
Yanda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item number six, consider a motion to approve the unified development code and proposed zoning map with exceptions and as recommended by the planning commission.
I move that we postpone the vote on this until our June sixth meeting, I believe is the next one.
Do you have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion?
Yes.
It's your, it's your motion.
No, just my reasoning for doing that is we got a three hundred and ninety-page document on Friday. This is a hundred and forty-eight pages of it. That becomes the rules, and I feel I owe it to my constituents to actually go through the codes and have adequate time to look at them, review them, and I know we've got some people that have some, some questions about it, and that's our job. We were elected by our constituents to do that, and that's what we should do.
If we pass this motion, we're, we're still good for discussion on, on the item?
No, I mean, your, your, the motion was to postpone voting on it until then, so if you're not voting on it, I think you move on to the next agenda item if that passes.
Can they have a discussion before we vote?
Yes, you have discussion before we vote.
Good evening, Mark Zetsow Johnson and Associates. So, a couple items that I wanted to follow up on. I think our ask would be to have a, a vote tonight. If there's concern over particular sections, if it's short-term rentals, or if it's food pantries, I think you have the option to defer those particular items if those are the ones that are, are causing concern. As we mentioned, we've, we've been at this for close to two years. I think we've come before you in multiple study sessions and showed you what was in the code, and so, but on the, the food pantry, I wanted to add a couple things. It's a long acronym, couldn't remember it off the top of my head, but our research that we went through to where we ended up what was placed in the code, under the Department of Justice, there's an act called the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. Based on that and court cases that stem from that, you cannot treat a church or a house of worship differently than other entities. So when we look at what a church is allowed to do or what any piece of property is allowed to do, they're allowed to have accessory structures on their property. They're allowed to have art pieces. They're allowed to have permanent installations of a nativity scene. They could put a shed out there. They can put a birdhouse out there. So when we think about structures and land use, those are allowed items. So in our review, to say that they cannot have a food pantry or even a book exchange, a little free library, that is what gave us concern to strike that and say it is not permitted. There are multiple court cases that looked at from First Amendment rights, freedom of speech for little free libraries. It also looked at concerns over freedom of religion, and so that's ultimately where we ended up on this. If it is the council's will, I mean, you can strike that and defer it, and we can bring back a separate ordinance for that later after additional study sessions. But I did just want to know, this has gone, over two years, there have been extensive research and conversations around what we felt was legally defensible for the city. So what we believe is we've brought forth a code that is legally defensible. Our goal as drafters of a code is to never see you end up in court over something that we've drafted, and we believe that's what we've done. We've restricted it to a small, small box that no one could enter. The concern is if you strike this, nothing would stop a church from putting out a shed that would allow someone to walk in. Now, you can go through the process of potentially fining them and taking them to court over it, but based on the research that's been done, you may not find yourself on the side that, that you'd like to. So where we're at, we're happy to answer any questions about the rest of the code if there are any. It seems like there were maybe two sections that are causing the greatest concern, and so if it is the will of the council to defer those two sections, we can strike those and bring those back before you and allow the rest of the code to move forward. Where we've been at now for six months, as we're reviewing every zoning application that comes before, essentially with two codes trying to understand what regulations are going to be in place. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I would like to amend the motion, and I'd like to pull the following for further study, which would be the Airbnb, food pantry, and the accessory buildings.
It's up to the, the person who made the motion whether or not you would agree to that.
Well, my motion just has to do with, I think that it's our job to actually look over what we're voting on and have ample time to do so, and I do not feel that we've had ample time to look it over.
Roger, would you mind to tell the council what you told me today during, in the email about the amount of time, because we've sent letters out and so forth?
Yes, initially, there was some concern because literally thousands, Mitchell can back me up on the number, but thousands of notices went out to the affected properties, the affected property owners whose property would be affected by this, about the two public hearings that were held, one at, one at municipal planning commission and one here, and it gave the two dates. And so the concern would be that we'd have to go ahead and send those notices out a second time and kind of get, get the public's input a second time after going through that. Now, if you, that would occur if you just tabled it indefinitely, but if you postpone it until a date certain, that would not require a second letter to go out, because the presumption is that the people who got the notice to be here would know that it would be continued to the next date. So that's, if you elect to continue, it, it needs to be to a date certain.
Is there any other discussion? State your name and your address.
My name's Mike Burris. I live at three hundred East Platt Drive. I wanted to address an issue on the Airbnbs. Do I have to speak to the motion itself, or can I address the Airbnbs and the Unified Development Code?
The, the motion that's pending is to, is to continue it to the June meeting, and so I think the discussion needs to be centered around continuing it, and then when you have the, if it comes back, then that you can get on specific topics. Councilman Yanda attempted to amend it to pull certain things from that. That was not seconded, so really the only thing that's before the body is the motion to continue it at this time, or to the date certain.
So if I can address Airbnbs then, what I would, what I would say is I think that the Unified Development Code inadvertently left out part of what's in the residential descriptions right now. I've got a copy of, can I? That's actually the, the residential code right now. I'm going to not read it to you, but if you look at the proposed Unified Development Code, at this one, I would direct you to where it talks about R-one residential.
Yes.
If you have one more copy?
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Thank you.
What's significant is that number one and number two are missing from the new Unified Development Code, and if you look at R-one, single family, the last, the last seven words are left off of single-family district, where it says protected from all commercial and industrial activity. I'm pretty sure you guys didn't figure that you were going to have a body shop or a, or a machine shop or a, you know, or the, the cruising facility next door to us. So I'm betting it was just an accident. So what I'm here to do is ask if you could either make a motion to amend that to put protected from all commercial and industrial activity back into the single-family residential districts. If you notice right below that in the original code on R-two, and I don't have a dog in this fight, I don't live in a duplex, but it says the same thing there, protected from all commercial and industrial activity. I would think you'd want to keep it, and it was a mistake that it just got left out, and it could easily be amended and added back in along with number one and number two. As to whether or not we're, we're continuing things and waiting, it's, it's, we're dealing with crazy now, you know? I mean, we really are, and so, and so I would hope that we, we really don't want another lost summer. We, I have pictures, I'm not going to try and show them to you, Mr., I've, I've sent a ton of them to Mr. Horton. On Sunday, I went to a real event center over on the Turnpike, and on the way to it, we went down, me, there were twenty cars in the street, and I have pictures of them, and, and, and they're on my phone. I can send them to you along with all the other pictures that he has with people jumping off the houses and, and the craziness that's going on. So I, I really would encourage you to, if, if we're going to have Airbnbs, to amend it, add these few words back in. Use the code, use the wording that we've had in the code in the past. It's already there. You don't have to come up with any new language, just add that back in and go on down the road. I do have it. I don't know, sir, you're chair in the meeting, so I, you know, the, the, the long and the short of it is I have it written up as a motion, but I don't know if I can make a motion from the floor. If you're the parliamentarian, you'd tell us. Reading that would rules for meetings for Roberts.
Only members of the public body can make a motion, sir.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, I'm just going to try, but, but I will also say that Johnson and Associates, this was a part of the presentation they made. I can leave this for you guys as well, if you're interested in it. In it, they say that the old language is, and they just quote the, the old language that I gave you out of the municipal code, so, but if, but if you want it, my point is Johnson and Associates agrees, this is the old language. We did exclude commercial and industrial properties from housing developments. I really think that'd be good if you guys like had it back in. You could amend it if you want it.
So, so the item that's pending is the motion to postpone?
I think you have another person.
Just come through the podium.
Need your name and address, please?
Susan Burris, three hundred East Platt Drive. I would also like to request, at the planning commission meeting, there was a discussion about an emergency clause that would make the ordinance come into effect in thirty days. Is that still?
If, what they have informed tonight is not the ordinance. This is just a proven that the actual ordinance would be brought back to them at the next, at another meeting, and those go into effect thirty days after publication unless they enact an emergency clause necessary for health and public safety.
So that would be, be four thirty days? It would go immediately? Is that correct?
Yes, it goes, if you pass the emergency clause, it goes into effect immediately after passage instead of waiting till after publication.
So we can do that at the next, when they-
If, if they choose to do so. It requires a separate vote.
Okay. I would ask that that be included. If you all would consider that, I would really appreciate it. One other request, when, if I understand this correctly, and you mentioned this also in the last meeting, that when a Airbnb receives, or they fill out a license for their application, you can consider past behavior for twenty-four months as far as granting them that license. Is that, can we use that also?
That was the discussion that was brought up. Mr. Zetsow might be able to address that.
Right, so there is language in the proposed code that says the city will look at the past twelve months if someone's operating illegally, and that will be used in the determining process of approval or denial of an application. I think one thing, I'll correct, the, the fines on illegally operating or operating outside of your approval are actually upwards of seven hundred and fifty dollars. I said six hundred earlier. So what we have done that doesn't exist today is allow the city to correct what's been going on for the past couple of years. I think everyone agrees that the photos, the videos that have been shared are out of line, completely unacceptable, and so delaying of the code and the ordinance from that standpoint just allows that to continue however long it takes to adopt the code. I'll just reiterate one more time. This does not, approving this code, whether it's today or a month from now, does not allow anyone to legally operate an Airbnb that's doing it today. So I think what these neighbors are facing will continue until some form of this code is adopted. We are putting in place portions in the zoning chapter of how someone could seek approval, which again requires your vote and your approval, but we're also amending your fines and fee schedule so that you have the teeth to remedy any bad actor who may be illegally operating or outside of the confines of a permit.
Let me ask you a question. If we approve the motion to postpone this till the next meeting or the, whenever, what does, what's our worst-case scenario in that for the city for, in general?
Well, I think the, the deferral at this point from, I think, the folks that are here, it allows the Airbnb to continue operating that much longer. Again, it's not going to make any allowed by right if you were to approve it today. I mean, I think- I mean, I think that's the, the main issue and the concern that's happening today. I mean, the food pantry issue, I think they're operating today as well. The accessory dwelling units, that's not really an issue that's occurring today. They would have to seek rezoning approval anyway. So I think the continued operation of those one or two bad actor Airbnbs are really the main concern. And I, I don't wanna speak, but it sounded like the person, the woman that just spoke was asking for the emergency when you do vote on it, so that went into effect immediately, so you can begin the process to correct what's been happening.
Have you come across any examples in municipalities where Airbnbs are dealt with in terms of zoning separately from just removing the previous language from R1 and R2?
Well, the removing the language from R1 and R2 really didn't have anything to do with the Airbnbs. When we look at writing a code, we're writing facts, we're writing definitions. When you lead in, you, you end up having this leading language that's suggestive of something. At the end of the day, land use decisions are per the council, using the comprehensive plan, which speak to land use compatibility. There are residential developments of all kinds that do mix commercial and residential uses. There are new urbanist communities, there's dwelling units above, so.
Well, I understand that, but we, but we are being asked to remove the language that protects single-family and multifamily properties from commercial and industry activity. So that's being removed, and that's one concern, but my question is, is, I mean, in simple terms, and zoning's not, you know, my expertise, but, so my question is, is there a separate process by which individual properties would have to come and, more than a permit, say, "I need a change in zoning or coding for this particular property so that I could operate an Airbnb or similar type business out of my home?"
Right, so if we're making, if we make the assumption that this was approved, anyone that sought an Airbnb has to file a special use permit, which is gonna require public notice, a planning commission meeting, and a city council hearing for that approval. During that, you're gonna look back 24 months where they illegally operating. You're gonna take public comment. You're also gonna know that, what their occupancy load is, so you'll have the ability to say, "You can't have more than four people in that home," based on bedrooms, however, however you choose to do that. If someone presents evidence that they were operating illegally, at that point, you could begin fin, fining them or revoking that Airbnb license. So they will, anyone who seeks an Airbnb will have to come back through the same zoning process.
For conditional use permit, right, but, so what kind of circumstances? You know, I, I don't wanna be a council that's in the business of deciding who can do what necessarily with their property, but, but when we are put in that position, we end up being less objective, because maybe there's a lot, you know, maybe this is my ward, so I'm more worried about it than if it's in somebody else's ward, and I vote no over here, but I vote yes over there, and then who's liable for, legally, for those kind of decisions? Or is it, or, or does the council just have sole discretion on who can and can't without any legal precedent?
No, absolutely, there's a framework that you have to work within. What you're looking at is the facts of the case. Every case is gonna stand on its own merit. Just like the two cases you heard today, it'd be no different of a process. Someone seeks to operate a coffee shop on one part of town, and another, one has protests, one doesn't. You're weighing the facts of the case and how that shakes out. I, I don't think that's any different. If we look at other municipalities, they've, a lot of them have taken different stances on Airbnbs. You have ones that have come out and said, "No, altogether, that's absolutely within your purview to do." There are others that have said, "Do it, just register it." Oklahoma City sends it to the Board of Adjustment for a hearing for every item. We felt putting it through the special use permit process protected everyone, and increasing the notice allowed the neighbors to be notified, really at a neighborhood level, of what's happening.
So when you talk about facts of the case, this, I mean, I may be not completely comprehending here, but it sounds like we would be almost obligated to approve conditional use permits unless we find reason not to, based on past behavior?
I think to an extent, but that's how all of your zoning cases work as well. So what you're looking at is, what is their occupancy load? Do they have the parking requirements to fulfill that load? You're looking at, you know, you could take into account, yes, if they were illegally operating in the past. But there are, I mean, I think you may have Airbnbs today that, in certain homes, that you're not seeing any protest, you're not seeing any issue. That's why they renew, you have the right to revoke, there are fine schedules. But, you know, without seeing, you know, specific cases in front of you, I can't speak to what those facts would are. We draft a staff report when someone filed an application, much like we do on every case. We'd make a recommendation, planning commission review, hear feedback, and make a recommendation for you all.
Could I address your, his comment, the councilman's question? About a year and a half ago, Susan and I went to a meeting in the village, and they created an ordinance, pretty much for the same reason. I'm sure not exactly the same wording, but it, it, to give their police department the tools to come in and address issues when you have a bad actor. Because, unlike you, if, if they're acting reasonably, then it's not as big of an issue. The village did pass an ordinance and allow the Airbnbs for a period of time. It's my understanding, and actually from the Planning Commission Chairman, Mr. Baker, is that it? It's from him, he said that now the village has said, "Okay, King's X, we screwed up." No Airbnbs at all in the village. I don't know that for a fact, I'm just taking his word for it, but I bet he's just didn't make it up. So, so it didn't work out for them. They tried it, but if you choose to do it, I, I agree with Susan, I think you ought to put the emergency on it. I think you ought to say, "No commercial or industrial activity." Some, one of the issues that goes to this commercial and industrial activity is the industrial part of your code and the proposed code talks about nuisance lighting, and talks about scatter lighting. Right now, on the back of this house, there are spotlights that when you turn, when they're turned on, we have to duck below our fence to be able to see our backyard. If we stand up straight, they literally blind you. It's a safety issue, because we have a pool open back there now. So if, you're gonna need something that can address the commercial and industrial issues, because the scatter lighting is a danger. And there are other things that will be addressed in other parts of the code. I applaud your, your thought that I, you wanna look at the rest of the code, and, and, great, I think that's fantastic. But we really don't want another lost summer. It, it, it's been tough for a year and a half now, so.
Thanks.
And I, I appreciate where y'all are at on that. I, and this is, I want to vote for this, but I think it's my duty, sitting here, to make sure I have looked at what we're voting on before I vote on it.
Any other discussion?
Mr. City Attorney, can I get a clarification on the, the?
For the record, can you please state your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name's Joe Horn, 102 South Fifth. So I, I'd like a clarification about the, the motion that's, that's on the floor?
The motion, as I understand it, probably I'll have the clerk read it back, what was to postpone the vote on approval of the Unified Development Code and proposed zoning map to the June 6, 2023 meeting?
And to include the food pantries as well?
It would include anything that's in the proposed zoning. Now, when they consider that, they can consider adopting it with accepting certain portions of it, whether it be the food pantry or any other provisions.
Is this our only opportunity to speak on it?
No, when it's on the agenda next time, there'll be a top opportunity to speak.
Okay, I, I, what's your name, Wazowski?
Mark.
Mark? Want to, I, I, I see him speak, and he's, he's giving his presentation, says, says that we've been working on this for two years, and we've, we've included all the boards and everything. As, as, as you all know, I'm chairman of the Board of Adjustments. And, and I was at one or two meetings with no input whatsoever. I was, I was told not to speak at, at one meeting, so I, I had, I had zero input. We, we put forward these, these food pantries, and, and I hear you say that it's a constitutional right that the church has for, for their, to put food pantries out and everything. I, I, and I live right across the street, across the street. We have got a church across the street over here. They have a constitutional right. I wonder, is, and as I read the code, do I have a right to a constitutional right to put a food pantry in my front yard?
I'm not gonna address that. You're a private citizen. I think Mr. Zitzau's comments were talking about the rights of a religious institution, which is what the proposed code addresses.
I'm an ordained minister, I, I assume that.
That's a fact I didn't know.
Probably no one did. But I assume from reading the, the code that I don't have the right to put a, a box in my front yard. I'm across the street from one. They have the constitutional right, but I don't. And, and I, I don't think, I don't think anybody realizes, unless you're down here, what, what, and I'd like, I'd like this to be on TV. I wanna see what you're, what you're bringing to my part of town by, by putting these food boxes in. If, if you wanna allow it, it's simple, allow it. I'm not asking you to, to do away with it. I'm asking you to bring them inside. I, I, I simply can't see any reason, legally or otherwise, why you wouldn't wanna bring that inside. Minister to the, to the people that, that you're trying to help, trying to feed, and, and bring it inside. It's, it's simple. I, I, I'd ask that you deny that, strike it, or, or amend it, and, and bring it inside.
Mr. Horn, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
As chairman of the Board of Adjustments, how long have you had this code in your hands to look at?
Was it six months, Mitchell? I don't see Mitchell. He stepped out. I, I couldn't tell you exactly. We, we met, and we were given this presentation. So it was a, it was a vague thing, and, and I didn't learn anything from it. Maybe, I'm not very smart, but I didn't learn anything from it.
Safe to say, a while?
Maybe six months.
Okay. Yeah, I'm asking for time for us to get to look at it, too.
Well, I, I, I think we certainly need more, more clarity on, on, on the few issues that I'm concerned about, because I see, I, I live right here, and I work right here. I don't get very far from here, and I see everything that's going on. And we can, we can go ahead and say, "Oh, this is what we have to do. You can't regulate this, so we have to do this, and we can let a, a, a certain group destroy your neighborhood." And that's what I see is, is happening. We, we were terrorized within three weeks by a guy on drugs. Now, I'm not saying these food pantries are the cause of it, but they're part of it. And if you build it, they will come, or you can fight it. And you're in a position to fight it. You can, you can make our town better, or you can just let it degrade. I wanna make it better, I'm not going anywhere. But if you, if you bring all this in, there's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna leave. And, and what about the guy with the, the car, the car lot he wants to put in over here? How's he gonna like that when there's, when there's tents set up outside? Well, I can see that from my kitchen window, and I'm not gonna like it. You, you set this food out for, for people to come and go of all hours of the night. Why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you wanna just be a good neighbor and limit it between nine and five? Then you can actually do your ministering to the, to the people. Could you bring them in, talk to them? Don't, don't ruin my town. Don't ruin my neighborhood. I, I think this needs to be studied, and I think we really need to think about whether or not we can, we can do something that's gonna make our town better, or, or we'll destroy it. I don't wanna live in San Francisco, I'll live in Yukon. And I want it to be nice, like it always has been.
I just wanted to quickly address a couple of things. I think you absolutely have the right, if you chose to in a, in a code to require this to be indoors, based on, again, our review of it, I, I think it becomes less defensible. You have to treat every zoning district and every user with the same set of standards. So if a church or a house of worship is permitted accessory structures to put up a flagpole, to put up a birdhouse, why is a food pantry different? And if it's stopping their mission, they have, they then have the ability to challenge you on that. There are multiple cases across the country that have looked at this, from Washington, California, New Jersey, and in between. There was one in, I believe, Shreveport. You have the right to amend it. What we are saying is, we have brought forth a code, and, and I apologize to the chairman, I don't believe I said that he wasn't allowed to discuss, and I hate that he left a meeting feeling that he was not educated, or that I did not do a, a good job preparing him for, for what we spoke about. We've had multiple meetings, multiple open meetings, that anyone in the community was free to attend. The code was, has been published, along with a notice, so I think it's been out there for about a month now, to be reviewed. But again, what we believe is, we brought you a code that is legally defensible. And I, I understand their concerns, and there might be a particular person or a particular group of people that certain neighbors do not like seeing in their community. But the church has the right to serve them. And what we have done is put restrictions in place. So if you go to page 46, what you'll see is, if you're going to have a food pantry box, must be located in non-residential districts, or as an accessory to an allowed place or assembly, assembly use, prohibited in the right of way, must be located so it does not impede pedestrian access. Limit of 60 inches in height, 36 inches wide and deep, must be constructed in a manner that the contents are protected from the elements, people cannot walk into it. Those are the types of things in a zoning code you can regulate when it comes to church uses and food pantries. What we do not believe you can regulate is that they have to be inside, or that you cannot have them at all. That's where we've landed, that's what we brought before you. We're happy to come back. If that's the will of the council, to continue to discuss it, we can, we can bring court cases back, or you have the right to amend it, and, you know, see where the cards fall.
I have a question for Mitch. Does this outdoor pantry meet code?
If you're talking about a building code, no, because you cannot occupy it. That, that's why we did, when we, when we was going through the process, making it small enough you could not get into it.
So the way it's constructed, the way you access it is, it meets the requirements of the city?
It would meet the zoning code requirements, but it doesn't meet the building code, because you can't occupy it. And that was the intent.
Right, but I meant, yeah, I meant the access to it, so.
And that's why it's specific about size and stuff, when we did that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
You know, we're not asking that. You know, we're not asking that, that you regulate the, the church's charity or, or their flagpole or, or their nativity scene or anything like that. I think any reasonable person is going to realize that this is one thing and this is another thing. I, I ask the city to defend what's right. And, and if, I, I, I see the city talking about protecting itself from being sued all the time. But they're on a spree of tearing houses down, tearing people's houses down. Don't seem to be worried about, about that guy whose house they just tore down, suing them. I don't know anything about it, other than this is a house. Sounds pretty important. You tear that guy's house down and, and, but you, you want to protect yourself from, I don't know who's going to sue you because they, they had to take their food covered inside. I don't want the city to get sued either. I, I, I care about the city a great deal. But I, I, I care about the city probably more than most people I know. The, the city needs to protect themselves. But the, the city should protect its citizens and protect ourselves from the bad element that's coming into town.
Is there anyone else that would like to discuss this topic? Okay. So right now, can we have the motion, can we have the motion read back?
The motion is to postpone the, this item until the June sixth.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, we'll vote on that. Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
All right. Item number seven. Consider approving the specifications and authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the Dale Robertson Center HVAC twenty twenty-three project located at twelve hundred Lakeshore Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma, as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? All right. Let's vote. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
All right. Item number eight. Conduct a public hearing in consideration of declaring two zero five Cedar Avenue, Yukon, Oklahoma, in violation of chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash two fifteen of the Code of the City of Yukon, declaring it a public nuisance of such nature and constitute grave and immediate danger to the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare. Directing the city staff to demolish the structure and to clear the property as quickly as possible in accordance to chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash three of the Code of the City of Yukon. Directing the city clerk to pursue the recovery costs for such work, if done by the city. Directing the city treasurer to place any such revenues collected into a specific fund for which said revenues were originally appropriated and further directing the filing of a notice in the county clerk's office.
Mr. Wooten, at this point, you would declare the public hearing to be open.
And I declare the public hearing open.
My name is Dale Hurst. I live at seven oh five Villa, and I'm the owner. I'm just here to ask for an extension to bring this into compliance. And I need to get a list of specific corrections to be made.
Mitch, can you talk on that?
As you can see, the pictures in the presentation, if he, if you would like, we can go meet with him at that address and come up with a list of requirements. I do not have them in front of me tonight, but we can go and meet. And he has several others on the agenda as well. That's what I'm talking about. So it's whatever the council chooses to do.
How long has, has he had notices before?
This is the first notice we went all the way. As you realize, we've been working this last year on structures that have been abandoned or not in use or have been unsecured. And this is one that we were working on. I think Ken originally, which we're not supposed to bring more than one, he posted them all at the same time. And because of the hearing times and the dates, they put us into where we had to put them all on the agenda. And at that time, some understanding, Mr. Hurst has not made contact with Ken, discussed what issues did need to be done to correct those issues.
Okay.
Okay. All right, is there anybody else? And you would close the public hearing.
I just wanted to confirm that I understand, Craig, you don't have a specific list. And I want to confirm with Mr. Horton that has he, to your knowledge, has he been sent a specific list? Or would it have been his responsibility to come and get it?
The things that would be posted on that would be the, the unsecured, boarded up, or, you know, abandoned house, not in any use. As you can see from the pictures in the presentation, that is some of the things that we look at. And it's on the state statutes what we go by. And it's her responsibility to make contact with a code enforcement officer to see what needs to be brought up. Because we've not actually went into the house or looked at it as a building construction deal. We looked at it as a building that's sitting there, falling apart.
Abandoned building.
Yes, or a house.
Mr. Hurst, what's your commitment if we extend some time on that? Well, what, what action are you committing to taking in the next ninety days?
Well, I'll make the corrections, required corrections, if I, once I know what needs to be done. And if I could get, you know, ninety days, I can bring them into compliance.
Okay. Eric, you got anything else? Rodney? Good? You good?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Good. All right, so we'll close the public hearing. Go to item number nine. Consider a motion to declare two zero five Cedar Avenue, Yukon, Oklahoma, in violation of chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash two, parentheses fifteen of the Code of the City of Yukon, declaring it a public nuisance of such nature as to constitute grave and immediate danger to the public peace, health, safety, morals, and welfare, and directing the city staff to demolish the structure and to clear the property as quickly as possible in accordance to chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash three of the Code of the City of Yukon. Directing the city clerk to pursue the recovery costs for such work, if done by the city. Directing the city treasurer to place any such revenues collected into a specific fund for which said revenues were originally appropriated and further directing the filing of a notice to the county clerk's office. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd, I would, I would recommend postponing the vote for sixty days so that the council could take a look at the process, progress being made on the property.
You'll have to amend the motion. That's-
Okay, I would amend the motion to include the date for review to be sixty days from today or the nearest council meeting at that time.
It'd be nice if we had a date specific on that because it does help us on our notice. Because if not, we have to start the notice process all over.
Let's see. Sixty days would be-
The second meeting in-
July four.
July?
I don't think we're going to be July four.
It's actually July six.
July six?
July six.
Okay.
That's a Thursday. So we're meeting on the sixth of that week. Okay. Then that, that motion to amend would be to include the date of July sixth for review before voting.
Just for clarification, since the agenda item is the, the motion to declare it a public nuisance and direct abatement, are you, is that what your motion is to do that? But, but bring it back for review on July sixth?
Yes.
Okay. So on that, we're going to come back July sixth and look and see what he's gotten done. And-
And if, and if we're not happy with the progress, this would stand.
That's a similar action to what you did on the, the Cali property. I don't recall that address on, is that Maple?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
All right. Item ten, to conduct a public hearing in consideration of declaring two one one Cedar Avenue, Yukon, Oklahoma, in violation of chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash two, parentheses fifteen of the Code of the City of Yukon, declaring it a public nuisance of such nature as to constitute grave and immediate danger to the public peace, health, safety, morals, and welfare. Directing the city staff to demolish the structure and to clear the property as quickly as possible in accordance to chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash three of the Code of the City of Yukon. Directing the city clerk to pursue the recovery costs for such work, if done by the city. Directing the city treasurer to place any such revenues collected into a specific fund for which said revenues were originally appropriated and further directing the filing of a notice in the county clerk's office. Make this, uh, public hearing open.
Same story. I want to just, you know, sixty days.
Have you started to work on these properties?
No, I've been kind of in limbo since I've got the notices. And I really didn't know which direction to go. But I'm starting probably this weekend and start to take corrective action.
And you can get the list of stuff from Mitch?
Yeah, from Mitch, sure.
Get it tomorrow? Have to go meeting? Okay. Anybody, anyone else? All right, we'll close this public hearing. And we'll go to item number eleven. Consider a motion to declare two eleven Cedar Avenue, Yukon, Oklahoma, in violation of chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash two, parentheses fifteen of the Code of the City of Yukon, declaring it a public nuisance of such nature as to constitute grave and immediate danger to the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare. Directing the city staff to demolish the structure and to clear the property as quick as possible in accordance with chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash three of the Code of the City of Yukon. Directing the city clerk to pursue the recovery costs for such work, if done by the city. Directing the city treasurer to place any such revenues collected into the specific fund for which said revenues were originally appropriated and further directing the filing of a notice in the county clerk's office. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And I would move to amend the motion to include a review date of July sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
Do we need a second on that?
I'll second that again.
Okay. Any discussion? I see none. Let's vote. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
All right, item twelve. Conduct a public hearing in consideration of declaring ten nineteen Cedar Avenue, Yukon, Oklahoma, in violation of chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash two, parentheses fifteen of the Code of the City of Yukon, declaring it a public nuisance of such nature as to constitute grave and immediate danger to the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare. Directing the city staff to demolish the structure and declare the property as quick, and clear the property as quickly as possible in accordance to chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash three of the Code of the City of Yukon. Directing the city clerk to pursue the recovery costs for such work, if done by the city. Directing the city treasurer to place any such revenues collected into a specific fund for which said revenues were originally appropriated and further directing the filing of a notice in the county clerk's office. Public hearing is now open.
Same story. I don't, just, we need to discuss the whole thing.
Anyone else? And we'll close the public hearing. And we'll go to item number thirteen. Consider a motion to declare ten nineteen Cedar Avenue, Yukon, Oklahoma, in violation of chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash two, parentheses fifteen of the Code of the City of Yukon, declaring it a public nuisance of such nature to constitute grave and immediate danger to the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare. Directing the city staff to demolish the structure and to clear the property as quickly as possible in accordance to chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash three of the Code of the City of Yukon. Directing the city clerk to pursue the recovery costs for such work, if done by the city. Directing the city treasurer to place any such revenues collected into the specific fund for which said revenues originally appropriated and further directing the filing of a notice in the county clerk's office. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I would move to amend the motion to include a review date of July sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote. Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item fourteen, to conduct a public hearing in consideration of declaring one one zero six South First Street, Yukon, Oklahoma, in violation of chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash two, parentheses fifteen of the Code of the City of Yukon, declaring it a public nuisance of such nature as to constitute a grave and immediate danger to the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare. Directing the city staff to demolish the structure and to clear the property as quickly as possible in accordance with chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash three of the Code of the City of Yukon. Directing the city clerk to pursue the recovery costs for such work, if done by the city. Directing the city treasurer to place any such revenues collected into a specific fund for which said revenues were originally appropriated and further directing the filing of a notice in the county clerk's office. And the public hearing is now open.
Same story.
Anyone else? We will close the hearing, public hearing. Go to item number fifteen. Last time I have to read this one. Consider a motion to declare one one zero six South First Street, Yukon, Oklahoma, in violation of chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash two, parentheses fifteen of the Code of the City of Yukon, declaring it a public nuisance of such nature as to constitute grave and immediate danger to the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare. Directing the city staff to demolish the structure and to clear the property as quickly as possible in accordance with chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash three of the Code of the City of Yukon. Directing the city clerk to pursue the recovery costs for such work, if done by the city. Directing the city treasurer to place any such revenues collected into a specific fund for which said revenues were originally appropriated and further directing the filing of a notice in the county clerk's office. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I would amend the motion to include a review date of July sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on this? Let's vote. Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
All right. Item sixteen. Consider approving the bid specifications and authorizing team design to advertise for bids for the State Highway sixty-six and Yukon Parkway intersection improvement project as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Uh, we had a question- Uh, we had a question previously, or I did, uh, as to if these improvements would stand if we do add a right turn lane from sixty-six onto Yukon Parkway?
Yes, we did, we did look into that, and right now the cabinet does have the, the, the switch, load switches that we could add, uh, signal head for a right turn lane.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? All right, let's vote. Gillen?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
All right, is there any new business?
None this evening, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Council discussion. Mr. Gillen, would you like to start?
Uh, nothing from me.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Thanks for bearing with me. I like to, to make sure I read things. Um, I do also want to remind everybody we're fortunate enough to have gotten the five A, six A state track meet, so hopefully on a week from Friday, the twelfth and thirteenth, our hotels are full, and our restaurants are busy those nights.
There you go. You see Yonda?
Nothing further this evening. Thank you.
We got anything to, dates or anything? Nothing? Anything important on here? Let's see, Festival of the Child is coming up Saturday, May sixth, ten to four. That's at the City Park. Um, we've got the community bike ride, and that is coming up Saturday, Saturday, May twentieth, nine-thirty to ten-thirty. That's at Taylor Park BMX Track. Uh, Pools and Splashpads will open up May twenty-seventh, and then concerts in the park begin June first. Okay, that's all I got. I'll pass that gavel and I'll bang in it. And this meeting is adjourned.